Call the meeting to order any items from the public.
Good morning to the Commissioner and everyone else. I'm, uh, my name is Alfred Benjamin. I'm a retired firefighter after thirty-five plus years. I've been in special operations. Uh, I held many positions, I sat on many boards. I'm here today about the policy of informant of family members in a policy known as PR dash seven. I'm here as a representative of my own, uh, for the Berkeley County Fire Department, um, being under this policy. And, and this policy does not fit any fire department that I know of. And I've been around a long time. I've been all over the country, pretty much over the world, to different firehouses. And this is, um, Berkeley County is one of the only counties that I actually ran into this type of policy. And I said before, I'm not here to change the total policy. I'm here to try to get, um, a waiver of this policy for the Berkeley County Fire, which, um, I don't know how much, you know, I know about the fire department, but I'm here to try to familiarize ourselves with some of the things in the fire. First thing, the fire department, police department, and the military, um, is run by sixty percent of family members. So what, um, I want to relay about the fire department is, the fire department is a tradition every job. And it's run by a lot of family members, and I understand, you know, the policy. Uh, say in administrative positions, um, I understand this policy, or fires the fire department. The fire department pretty much runs itself, uh, under this type of policy. It's, knowing the fire department, it's a great organization, right? Um, I'll just give an example. When you come to work, first thing, if, uh, I'll just take an example as firemen. You come to work, the first thing happens is, you have a roll call. Roll call, you're given positions that you're gonna have in case of emergency or fire. What happens is, um, it, it looks like, hey, why, you know, when the firemen are going to do their job, but it's very well organized between the guys that put the fire out, the guys that vent the windows, it's all organized. That's why they have radios, so everything gets done, uh, you know, in the organization. So now, if you, as a firefighter, your position is not done, it's known. Because if I'm pushing in fire, and you got a vent from the roof, right? When you vent, that releases all the gases and pressures off of me to give me a better chance to push the line, to put the fire out. So now, if that roof is not done, now, I'm really taking a bad beat, because everything is, um, coming down on us inside here. So you know that this firefighter didn't get his job done. So when you get back to the firehouse, or they critique the fire, you're gonna take some beating, because your position wasn't done, and these guys, you know, suffered in there, and had to work harder to get, um, their job done. And I'm being straight up and honest with you, there's nothing that father's a chief, a lieutenant, or a captain, there's nothing he can do to save you from that beating that you're going to get. And if, as a firefighter, if this continues, that your job is not done, um, you lose total respect of the man. Because, um, I say it's like, uh, the three must get tears, right? All for one, and one for all, you know, in a fire. My life depends on yours, and you depend on mine, in that situation. So I just want to say this part is, that there's nothing that your father, as a chief, captain, or lieutenant, can do for you, if your job is not done. And it don't even matter, if you transfer to another firehouse, those words that you don't do your job, it's gonna beat you here. So in the fire department, it's ultimate respect, and that's what you want. You want ultimate respect, and part of having ultimate respect is part of getting your job done. And if you don't do your job, I guarantee you that there's nothing that your father can do for you to save you from the fire. Remember, it's between three and six firemen in these firehouses. It's only one captain, one lieutenant. So as a chief, coming through the job, coming up through the job to become a chief, you know what it takes. You know what it takes. You cannot go fight fires, you cannot do emergencies, and you cannot, um, get the men to respect your son. You know, and he's gotta earn by his own merit respect, by doing his job, you know, and doing his job. As a, um, say my father's a chief, I walk into the firehouse, I go, oh, oh, I wanna drive, my father's chief did so and so. That's not gonna happen. That's not gonna happen, you know? Because these men that become shovels, they became shovels by their qualification and all their merit. I just wanna thank the community for letting me speak, and I just, I'll try to give you some insight on how to work. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, I'm sorry.
I'd like to introduce you to, um, April Cassidy. April is your new grants coordinator. She just started with us on Monday.
Okay.
You're still here.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
Well, today might change that, since she's met us, so.
Um, I've kind of lived all over. I've actually been here in Martin for seven years.
Oh, well, welcome. We're glad you're here.
Where are you from? Where are you from?
I graduated from high school in Shanawh, Virginia. I've lived Phoenix, Seattle, Monterey, California.
And what's your experience?
Um, actually for about, I'd say fifteen years, um, on and off, raising my daughter. I worked in higher education.
Okay. Very good. Well, welcome, and, um, you'll be part of a, a good team here that, that does an amazing job for us, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
All righty. Any other items from the public? Uh, no, I was just asking if there's any other items from the public? Okay. Can I have a, um, motion to approve the agenda?
I shall move it.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign, oppose, motion carries. Purchase order log, any questions for Tracy?
I do have one question.
Okay.
Um, on the, on the grant, or the, um, I think it's the last thing on here, the Amazon Capital Services, um, where, where do those backpacks and supplies go to?
To the children that are involved in the programs at the baby birth center.
Okay. I was just wondering, I didn't know if we donate them to the schools, if that was unfit.
Or we have the Joe Kip grant that's involved with the schools, so yeah, they'll end up in hands, the children involved with schools.
Okay.
No internal budget revisions, is, is that all? I'm sorry, any other questions for the, okay. No internal budget revisions, we have change in status. Uh, change in status received from Randy Lilly, Emergency Services Manager for Justin Murphy. He's gone from firefighter two to firefighter three with a salary increase of fifty-six-zero-zero-five to fifty-eight-five-fourteen, effective August the tenth. Change in status receive, received from Tim Zaya, Community Corrections Director, for a Taylor Parker. She is receiving a classification increase, uh, for Peer Recovery Support Specialist. Her salary will go from forty-three thousand one thirty-five to forty-three thousand six thirty-five, effective July the twenty-first. A letter of resignation received from Recovery Resource Center for Erica Reiner, effective August the thirty-first. Letter of retirement received from the Sheriff's Department for Ronald Gardner, effective September the twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three. And that's all we have there. Do we have approval from the minutes? Uh, everyone was here, so those can, those can stay. Commission calendar. Okay. All righty, we are here today on August the seventeenth. There we are, all righty. So this evening, we have a seven PM museum board meeting, is that correct, HD? Is that correct?
That's correct.
First one, make it a good one, huh? Uh, the twenty-first at four PM, we have the Health Board. Uh, we have Main Street Martinsburg at five-thirty, and six PM, we have Planning Commission. Uh, Tuesday, the twenty-second, I will be on the radio at WRNR. And then on the twenty-third, we have one PM CVV. Three PM, we'll have Senior Services, and on, on the twenty-fourth, we have the Emergency Ambulance Authority at five, and at five PM, we have the Library Board. Any changes or corrections to that?
The Board of Health will be moved from the twenty-first to the twenty-eighth, because everybody is going on the twenty-first.
Okay.
They'll be in Martinsburg.
All righty. Any other changes? Commission calendars, I have a bond release from Spring Mills, Phase Two, Section Two, Plat One, lots one forty-nine to one sixty-five. B C P file number zero one six dash one four tied to L A M A case twenty-one oh two dash oh seventy-four and twenty-three oh one dash zero zero two. Bond number one zero zero four three five seven two one, Engineering Department, is that? I'm sorry?
It's Phase eleven, or Phase two.
Phase eleven, it is, okay, sorry about that. I have a bond release, Seasonal Services LLC, file number two-two zero eight dash two-five-five, tied to file number two zero one two dash zero zero one two, grading bond. File, or the bond number is seven six three zero zero one five one, and the Engineering Department has recommended that. Have a bond release for Yorkshire Glen, Phase One, is that correct? Yep. Section three, file number zero one seven dash zero six tied to number two one three dash zero nine eight and two one zero eight dash three two zero, bond number eight zero 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 one five four nine nine. Engineering Department has recommended that. And a bond release for Yorkshire Glen, Phase One, Section Two B, file number one zero five dash oh five tied to two one zero six dash two one four, bond number one zero four eight five eight oh, and the Engineering Department has recommended that one. One last one here, bond reduction for Spring Mills, P U D, Section One, Phase Eleven. Okay, Plats Two, lots one one five dash, or one one five through one eighteen, and one thirty-seven through one thirty-nine. B C P file number zero one six dash one four tied to number two one zero two dash zero seven four and two one zero four dash one thirty-nine, bond number one zero zero three six seven three seven three. And the Engineering Department has made that recommendation. Any questions there for Doug? Alright, thank you so much. We have a cancel check request from the clerk's office, is that still there? Okay. For stopping, alrighty, there we are. And do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. And next up is our Honorable Larry Hess, assessors for twenty-four personal property tax exoneration. Reason for office error, and three appointments. All yours.
How you doing?
Good, how are you this morning?
Oh, that's you, Barry. Yeah, we do have, we got twenty-four of them for the reasons that's listed there. We had to bring them over for correction, they're all office error, personal property. And for those twenty-four totaled here, they total up to seven thousand four hundred thirty-seven dollars.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the twenty-four personal property tax exemptions due to office error?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Got two of them. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed?
I assume Jeffrey Jones had a heart attack when he opened his tax bill.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of people did issue with it.
Yeah, two thousand three hundred fifty-two dollars.
Nice camper, huh?
Yeah, that was a heck of a game.
Yeah, alrighty. Let's see, three apportements of assessment of taxes per final divorce, we have three of those.
Yes, sir, we do. First one's for Thomas and Tracy Miller, they had two vehicles. We made an exception bill for each one, so the individual pay. Same thing for the other two. The next one was for Dennis and Tara Mason. They had two vehicles, we had to separate that, and then to get a separate bill. And the third one, same thing, Michael and Jennifer Hunger, had two vehicles. We separated their bills, so they could get separate bills, so those three for your.
Okay, you have heard the separation of apportments, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And do I have a second? All those in, well, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Board and meeting reports, Mr. Boyd?
Didn't have any meetings this week. We did go down to Glade Springs for a county commissioner training. That went well, we got to meet a lot of different commissioners from all over the state and learned a lot of new things. Have a big thing that's been slated by the Director of Arts for July twenty, July fourth, twenty twenty-six, for the two-hundred-fiftieth.
Anniversary.
Anniversary of U S. It's a neat program they put together that's coming up and been assigned to a group to meet with them to go over and organize and develop that project. Will be quilt made that'll be put in the state museum in Charleston. Each county is responsible for making a square on the quilt. So that was fun, a lot of things going on, and I guess that's about all I have there. Oh, also, Saturday, this Saturday, we have the back-to-school program with Main Street at the Roundhouse, along with the farmer's market, ten to two. They're giving away haircuts, they have bounty houses for kids, they have backpacks and school supplies to give away to the kids. So encourage families to stop out if they need supplies for their kids for school and stop by the farmer's market, that's been growing every week. It's been a great program this year with the farmer's market moving to the Roundhouse. And we usually have live music there as well, there'll be food trucks, a lot going on down there this Saturday.
Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Bernhardt?
Well, it seems just like yesterday, we had the two-hundredth anniversary of the United States of America. My how time flies. I had a M P O meeting with Commissioner Catlett. It was pretty much routine, but I tell you, there was a lot of projects for tip, you know, engineering adjustments and all that kind of stuff. About the most interesting part, Steve will elaborate on that, I'm sure. And Meals on Wheels held their annual golf tournament yesterday, and it was successful. Gary can attest to the quality of the food.
We didn't win, but the food was delicious.
So you didn't pencil whip your card or anything?
Well, people watching, Mr..
Mr. Catlett?
Okay, last Thursday, we had another Enwood Park meeting. They're getting closer to getting ready to go bid design, but obviously, it's going to take a lot of money to build this park. But at this point, we have made the last hurdle with Senator Manchin's proposal. And actually, initially, it was only one million dollars, but it's now been adjusted to one point two five, so one and a quarter million dollars. And we have, in their quality of life, an additional six hundred plus thousand dollars that could be added to that. So our hope is, is that if we have, if it gets through Congress and passes, gets approved in their budget, that we could maybe break ground sometime next year, get something started up there. It certainly won't be enough funding to complete the park, but hopefully, get the infrastructure in and then get some amenities in there that the folks in that end of the county could actually start using some facilities. So we'll see how it goes, and obviously, we could use more funding down the road, so. And as H D mentioned, Gary and H D and I attended the West Virginia County Commission Association Seminar in Glade Springs, and I was very pleased with it, it was very informative. I got appointed as the legislative chair for our region, which is the eastern region, it's called, obviously. And it's actually the six regions in there, it's broken down the same as the opioid regions are broken down. So it's eight counties in our region. And as a legislative chair for that particular region, I will be attending throughout the year then their board meetings across the state. And this fall, their next meeting is actually going to be in Cacaton State Park, so. And as I talked to the folks there, Daniel Hall was there, who obviously works with Summer and Access Strategies, and Summer and Daniel have a very close relationship with the association as well, and of course, they represent us. So I think it'll be a good, a good mix. And I'm pleased to be on this committee to try to help our situation. If we could get more than just our own efforts to help get bills passed that would help us, then it's nothing but positive, so. And then yesterday, as Jim mentioned, we did have our M P O meeting. The good news from that meeting for us is, is that they have a place nine oh one, the curbs that we've been busting about for years on nine oh one, and they're now in the plans for future improvement. So we hope they follow through on this and address that issue. Nine oh one, the development on that road has been unbelievably, over the last couple of years. And as Jim and I were talking, they actually, the trucks are starting to use it now because of the congestion if they go further up the road, so it's not, it's not a good road for trucks at this point in time, and hopefully, we can correct that, so. But that, that's it. Thank you.
Alrighty, myself, I had two meetings. I had the Airport Authority, the largest, but the biggest topic was the airshow that's coming up on the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. Wanted to make mention of the one sixty-seventh, they've been a great partner in facilitating a lot of the activities that'll be going on out there. There's still a dire need of volunteers, if anybody has it in their, their desire to go out and volunteer, there's, they're still looking between seventy, seventy and eighty still needed, if anybody knows of any. The flight school hours are down a little bit because of the maintenance, that had to be on one of the airplanes, so that didn't get fulfilled too much. But the charter business has picked up slightly, but however, it's still off by a few, a few thousand, so that being said.
Jim, when I was at the M P O meeting yesterday, I was at the airport, and I had a chance, it's still under construction, but it's almost ninety-nine percent complete, the playground unit that was put in, it's in a design as a plane, and it's got the rubberized surface, and I was really, really pleased to see that, and real impressive.
Yeah, that was going to be.
I commend the Airport Authority on that particular improvement.
Yeah, they're calling it the educational, because you're not allowed to have a playground on airport property, or according to the F A A. But they're also going to look at that other building that's there to turn it in, possibly a pavilion that will be leased out to activities, whether it be for reunions or just anything scheduled over there, so they're going to.
It's a much smaller scale than what we designed years ago to put there, but still, it's better than nothing. And I think the community wants the pavilions built, and get a lot of good use out of it.
Yep.
How entertaining it would be that you could sit there and have a picnic and then see the sea, you know, the big planes.
Seventeen, yeah.
It's a nice addition.
Yep, sure is. Soon to have the ribbon cutting on that, so I got some grandkids that are anxious to get out there for it. And then, then on last Thursday, had a fire board meeting. The, all the stations are doing upgrades to some of their, their equipment. Let's see, I can't remember all the numbers, they go through it pretty fast, and I'm still trying to get educated on it. The Company Twenty, the fires, oh, the big topic was a pre-alert system that they're looking into for the volunteers that will hopefully reduce their scratch rate. It's a, I can, probably ought to have them come in and explain it to us on one of the, one of the stations. But what it does, it'll send out a pre-alert to the, to the volunteers that may not be in station that will get them to the station in order for them to be able to do a call out for, for a truck or service. So that was, that was a pretty good topic, so they're looking into, putting that into, into service there for the, for their stations.
Of course, the state in their latest session designated twelve million dollars for the fire companies, and six is, six million is going to go directly to the stations. The good news on that was, they initially took that money out of surplus, but they changed it, and it's taken out of general funds now. So that means it has hope of being an annual increase to the stations instead of a one-time, so.
I was not sure the exact amount of money that Berkeley County would be, be receiving, but it's, it's a significant amount.
It'll help for sure, and right now, I think that under the old formula, they're getting forty-eight thousand to some odd dollars per station, and then, of course, there's going to be money coming directly to us for E M T and fire as well.
Yep.
And that's through another six million that will be broken down, some by population, some by, if you have fees in place. And so we're going to qualify for both of those sources.
What helps some of the other counties out is they have so many volunteer stations, more than what we have. And so that money, that forty-six thousand that we receive per station, is compounded down in southern part of the state. They might have twelve or fifteen stations, so. So the balance of the revenue makes it look like we're not getting our fair share when you look at the population that we have here that, you know, I think that's, that's a sort of a skewed amount of money that we're missing out on, just because.
Because of the number of firehouses.
Right, so hopefully, they'll, they'll see our need to and reward us accordingly.
I doubt it.
I doubt it, but you know.
Did they say this is going to go up in population this time, though?
Certain parts of it, okay, certain parts of it, yeah.
Yep, so that's about all I have. Board and commission vacancies, we have a new application received from Cynthia Thurston for the Senior Services Board. Want to bring her in for an interview, is that?
Yeah, we'd like to do that, for sure.
Alrighty, and we are with Barbara Fortner. Come on up for the Senior Community Employment Program. Come on up and.
You guys have a lot of business to discuss up here.
Yeah.
I'm from Grant County, so it's a little smaller.
I've been to Grant County many times.
Have you?
Oh, yes, indeed.
Beautiful country.
Yes, it is.
You live in a great place.
Yep, I love it there. First, I want to thank you for giving me a few minutes to come to talk about our program. I am the director of the Senior Community Service Employment Program. And I am going to county commissions, county councils, I've met with some of the authorities in general counties, fire associations, to ask their help to get the word out in the community. You guys know your communities, you know who might benefit from the program, both participants and nonprofit organizations. A little history on the C C E P program. June fourteenth, nineteen sixty-five, Lyndon Johnson authorized the creation of C C E P under the Older American Act in response to the high poverty levels and the increasing aging of populations. When he signed it into, when he authorized it, I would like to read you, according to the American Presidency Project, he said, "The Older Americans Act clearly affirms our nation's sense of responsibility for the well-being of our older citizens." Throughout the years, there have been a few changes to the program, but it's basically, pretty much how it was back then. It is the only federally funded program, job training program, that is specifically works with people who are fifty-five or older. To qualify for the program, you have to be fifty-five or older, low income, unemployed. And the aim of the program is to foster individual economic self-sufficiency, promote useful opportunities in community service activities, increase the number of persons who can enjoy the benefits of unsubsidized employment. We do give priority to people that are sixty-five or older, veterans, where their spouses get priority. Minority groups, people with disabilities, people with literacy skills, people with low employment prospects, or homeless, or people who are at risk of homelessness. We put our participants into. We put our participants into nonprofit organizations where they do, you know, whatever is needed. We have, I have a participant at Mineral County Commission. She is, as a secretary there. While she is there, she gets paid, they do about 15 hours a week, she gets paid $8.75 through our program. They pay her. The host site does not pay them. We also cover them under our workers' comp. So, although they're getting a stipend, it is like they're a volunteer for the nonprofit organization. It can be a federal or state government, city government, daycare, hospitals, schools, senior centers, housing authority, churches, you know, any nonprofit organization. Sorry. They can be in the program for up to 48 months, a lifetime. The goal of the program is for them to get in, get some training, and find a job, because then if something would happen, you know, and that job didn't all work out, the company would downsize, then they would have time to come back to the training, back to the program, to get training in, you know, something else. Some examples of where we have people is, we have people at the Grant County Airport Authority, Grant County Housing Authority, Region 8 Planning and Development, Mineral County Commission, Mineral County Aging and Family Services, Arty County Health and Wellness. I have a participant at the Berkeley County Department of Health and Human Services, she just started last week, we're excited about that. That's a new host site, never say. We have people at the Horizon Goodwill Resource Office in Martinsburg, and at the Horizon Goodwill Store here, too. We do not, as a program, run background checks on the participants, but some host sites do, and that is, you know, their option to do that. As a host site, the supervisor of a participant would, you know, just be responsible for making sure they know what they need to do, helping them learn any programs or any skills that they need to, and most importantly, signing that timesheet twice a month and sending it. Don't forget that, they get upset about that. They are required to create an account with workforce and seek employment while they're in the program. An example of how we like the program to work is in June, sorry, July of '22, I enrolled a participant in our program, he was 60 years old, homeless, with no income. That gentleman was in our program, we placed him at the Horizon Resource Office, where he got some office training, he applied for some positions, and on February 27th of '23, he was hired full-time at the Career One Stop, making $20 an hour, sick days, vacation days, travel expenses. That is the goal of the program.
Was he homeless or about to be homeless?
You know, back into, I'm sorry.
Was he homeless or about to be homeless?
No, he was homeless.
And does he have a place to stay?
Yes, yes. He has found home, housing, and, you know, that is the, that is my success story of the program. Now, my office is in Petersburg, in Grant County, at the Region 8 Planning and Development Office. I do, however, have a satellite office at the Career One Stop, everyone, do it the liking way. Sherry Masterson is a participant in the program, and her job is to handle my paperwork up here, so I don't have to come up all the time. She does have some information that she's going to pass out to you. It's a handbook with some further information about the program, business cards and contact information. So, if, you know, like I said, if you, as a council, would just, you know, get the word out in your area.
So, you're totally funded by federal dollars, then, is what you're saying?
Excuse me?
You're totally funded by federal dollars?
Yes.
Or are they state money?
Department of Labor.
Okay. No state money? And you're, you're not an agency of the state, then?
No.
State, okay.
Yeah.
And what do you pay per hour?
Because it's funded by the Department of Labor, you pay $8.75, which is.
Minimum wage, yeah. And how many hours a week can they work?
They start every fiscal year, which our fiscal year starts to last first at 15 hours.
Per week?
Yes, 15 hours a week. The Department of Labor does monitor the budget, and occasionally, they give us permission to raise the hours. Like, we just ended this past fiscal year at 29 hours a week.
Okay.
But, you know.
But you're not through the workforce, then?
I'm sorry.
You're not through the workforce, then?
No, we're not through workforce.
Okay, separate from that.
Right, right.
Because they have a similar type program.
Right, yeah.
Right.
And I think that workforce program works with anybody, don't they?
They do. And they, they go youth, they go youth up, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. We, you have to be 55 to be in our program.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Right.
We specifically work for my age people. So, that was, you know, I just wanted a few minutes, you know, because some people have said we didn't even know that program was out there, so.
Yep.
Just wanted to get the word out, and thank you very much. Do you have any other questions, or?
Any questions, HD?
Sounds great.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. You ever see JR Kaplinger tell him I said hello? You know JR? He was a commissioner, well, no, he was Arty County, I'm sorry.
Arty County.
Arty County, yeah.
I just did a presentation there, too, last week. I delivered that, my 16.
And I got another friend, Charlie Davis, who lives over there. You know Charlie?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Alrighty, Mr. Wine, we have CSRO contracts?
We do. It's that time of year where the, the, the school board and yourselves finalize the contract for school resource officer engagement for the current fiscal year, if you will. This one took a little bit of effort, probably one of the greatest ones was getting everything changed from council to commission on the paper, right, Ben?
Right.
So, Council Vice President Goganar and myself, and Mr. Cadlet, in a couple instances, met with the school board to discuss the funding. If you remember, last year, there was a point of contention modifying the agreement to be inclusive of your current pay scale for your deputy sheriffs. We worked with Assistant Superintendent Ron Branch, which was wonderful to work with. Basically, what you've got in front of you is a contract for the current fiscal year of the school board, at the current rate of your officers to total and not to exceed $195,000 for the, the current year. One of the, one of the major changes, or probably the single most major changes, what they have asked for is, if they could pay for the day service. So, we took the $195,000 and broke that down into a day. Essentially, what happens is, if you have an SRO that goes on vacation, you don't have other trained officers to become an SRO. So, in, in many instances, what the sheriff will do is overstaff that area of the county if something were to happen. So, there are instances where, and it's not many, but there are instances where you may not have an officer in the building, and all they've asked for is, hey, you know, if they're not here, we'd rather not pay for them. Seems logical, I don't have any issues with it, it's a decision for you. So, if you so choose, they would like to just break it down to day, which boils down to about $324 a day. And if you have someone out, they don't pay for them, or they don't get a service, I don't know why they would pay for them, so.
Well, do the, do the SROs get coverage for their vacation? So, they take a vacation, they don't get paid at all?
The SRO does, but they aren't serving.
That's what, I mean, the SRO gets paid.
Of course. This has nothing to do with the officers at all. They're fully funded, this doesn't affect, and this literally is reflective of what the.
The contract, yeah.
That's right.
Pay for services.
That's right. So, if the commission agrees, it's a, it's a not to exceed $195,000, pay $324 a day per officer per school.
There you are.
I'm in favor of it. The only thing I would like to see is students get another person trained as a SRO, and they could be a substitute for any of the three, when they're all, you know, the day that something might happen is the day they're probably not going to be there.
Yeah.
So, it makes sense to me, because then when they're not being an SRO, they're just doing their regular duty as the sheriffs.
What, and the sheriff, and I don't want to speak for the sheriff, but I can give you some insight that he shared with me, is that his position on that is, it's so highly trained, that if they aren't practicing as an SRO, then the skill set is lost, it's kind of like all of us. So, if you, the, the three SROs that you have, they live, eat, and breathe, school resource officer.
But during the summer?
In the summer, they're serving, and this is the flip side to that. So, when they come out of the schools, and they're not performing SROs in the summer, they don't go on the road. They're not trained, even though they're sworn Berkeley County Deputy Sheriffs. They don't have the day-to-day skills to be on the street dealing with combative, whatever it may be, so they do paper serving and stuff like that. So, it's so, it has become, in the year 2023, so highly trained and really refined, whether you're a road officer, whether you're on a task force, whether you're a school resource officer, they're, it's not as easy to cross-train like it used to be. So, he did have a concern with that, if you remember, he, he asked for another SRO to be a footer, if you will, that was around all of the other schools. If you're going to do that, I, my gut would say, the first comment from the sheriff again, I wouldn't speak to him, was, well, I'm going to need that funded just for that, and I'll rotate them through, they wouldn't be a rail deputy. So, we could have those conversations for sure, but that was his position, was, if they're not there every day, it's very dangerous to make them ask them to do it.
So, the SROs are just in the high school?
Yes, sir, we have three of them.
I, I don't understand that, because I would think middle schools, or whatever they call them nowadays, are just as needful.
They're working on that. So, if you saw the, the school board, they've worked on it, and they've chosen not to leverage the sheriff's office for that. They, they were going to do that themselves with contractual aid, but they are working on that. That was a topic of the school board meeting that Mr. Cadlet, Mr. Goganar went to, and they actually appropriated, Steve, the better part of, you know, four new ones, but they weren't going to use.
But they've got, and, and my conversation was, that's what I'm hoping with the outstate tag collection, extra money, that would give the school board, who's going to get the bulk of that money, money, of course, SROs. So, eventually, they could get all the middle schools covered, and maybe down the intermediate at some point, so.
Yeah, schools are certainly.
Retired officers is what they were looking for, not what they said.
Well, that's what they're going to do through the contracted PPS. Because the regional guy, Kevin Plummer, who is the regional guy for the state, appointed to this region, is a retired state trooper, and they're going to use the same mentality in terms of hiring contracted SROs for these middle schools, so.
Very good. Do you need a motion for that?
We.
Steve?
I, I would like to make a motion that we enter the MOU for this next school year as presented.
Second.
Alrighty, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Drug-free, drug-free workplace testing policy, PR 22.
So, as you know and are aware, you have been doing random drug testing for your employees in public safety at 911, the District for the Port Marshals, as well as your fire staff. Right now, currently, you've outsourced that testing. It has become problematic for your staff when they in turn get the random selection. They could be at the testing site a couple hours. You well imagine, when you go to a testing site for a random drug test, you probably aren't a priority, you're going to an urgent care, is what it is. So, you're not a priority forever. So, you might sit there 45 minutes.
Or longer.
Or longer. Tim, as you well know, is always Johnny on the spot to say, hey, I can do this, hey, I can do this. I think he does that so he can ask for more buildings, basically.
He's getting that.
Yeah, right. So, we sat down, actually Penny spearheaded it, and we sat down and said, okay, hey, let's look at this and see what we can do. Immediately realized that it was something that Tim and his testing staff could do on-prem. Tim's guaranteed it will be priority, so if you get a, a 911 operator that has to go be tested, they're in and out, they're priority, they're back to work in minutes, as opposed to hours. It's also cost reduction. The test kits from Tim is really all we're looking at, he's just going to work us into the normal routine. So, all this is, is move the efforts from an outside contractual obligation to an internal testing environment. We have the facilities, we have the skill set. Jeff has reviewed the policy from our legal efforts, so really, we're just not outsourcing, we're doing it internally.
We don't have a drug place, drug-free workplace testing policy now?
You do, but it's externally done, this just brings it in.
Got you.
You mentioned that, you know, once someone was tested, they could either return to work, if they tested positive, we would not have a testing.
It's not immediate.
It's not.
In some instances, it gets sent out. The resulting, that Tim gets, we, Tim, what's the name of the lab service you use?
Redwood, okay.
Yeah.
Say again, Gary, the 911 Fire?
Port Marshals.
Port Marshals, that's it. Not the Sheriff's Department.
Home confinement, excuse me.
Home confinement. But not the Sheriff's Department. Is that because they're civil service?
No. You'd have to have that discussion with the sheriff, they aren't your employees.
Yeah.
But for your purposes of liability and testing, and this can only be done with regard to emergency service staff, it has to be relative. You can't, you can't just test an administrative person. For cause, Jeff, correct me if I'm right, for cause you can, but you cannot randomly test your employees unless they're tied to emergency services.
Yeah, it's considered an invasion of privacy violation.
So, if they, if you got cause, like he comes in.
Yeah, if they're stumbling and speech, words, something like that, that's what I think, that just to randomly test somebody who's, you know, just works at an office, they're not putting, the public's not in grave danger if they are in there.
Unless he's driving a car and has a wreck?
Well, I mean.
A sesor.
Yeah, I mean, I, that's what, it's not really, the policy's not written that way, but those folks are more borderline, as far as, if they've got to drive a car every day, or several times a week for the county, they would probably be ones we could work into it, because, yeah, that is potentially putting the public at risk, but they're kind of in the middle there. They're, they're different from the folks that just are just coming in at, like, my office. Something, it happens with one of us, it's not like the public is there, nobody's going to, can't hurt you, so.
But you could have a policy where everybody's tested, though. Your pre-employment, you do.
Pre-employment, but not.
Not post-employment.
That's where it's.
No, I didn't mean random, I mean, even post-employment, could you have a ongoing testing policy for all?
No, it still would be considered too invasive.
Okay.
Without having.
But just pre-only, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, they ask for the commission, if so chooses, to.
To adopt.
To adopt the policy and begin doing the random drug testing for the departments listed in section, it's in the section four, paragraph A. So, it is not included, not limited to 911 operators, port marshals, home confinement officers, and professional firefighters. Again, the sheriff hasn't chosen to use it, but if he did.
It'd be here.
It could be.
You're, you're on board with the thing totally. Do you need a motion, then?
Yeah, motion to adopt.
You are, want to like to make that motion as presented to adopt this new drug, random drug testing policy?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second. And this will be effective immediately, Mr.?
No, it's further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. And we are a little before 10:30. You all want to go ahead and do items from the public, y'all need a break, are you okay?
No.
Moving on?
[inaudible].
Oh, okay, then we'll take a break until 10:45. Oh, okay. Then we'll take a break until 10:45.
Okay, we're back in session. We have an executive session today for personnel.
Personnel.
And do I have a motion to go into executive session?
No motion.
We are in executive session.
Second please.
Oh, second.
Second.
And there will be action coming out.
Yes.
We are back in session and coming out of executive session. Do I have a motion to come out?
No, you don't need to.
That's right, we just come out, I'm sorry. Alrighty, we're out of executive session. Any action to be taken? For the employee.
There is. I make a motion regarding committee information here between.
How much should I talk?
To recommendation to terminate Heather Grandstaff from 911 employment effective immediately.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign a pose, she has been terminated. Any other items? Any items from the public? Mr. Barnhart.
Mr. President, I would like to move to recess.
We are in recess.